All right, we are all good? We set up for livestream? Excellent. It is April 26, 2022 of our City Council Work Session calling to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Present.
Vice Mayor, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand.
Thank you. And Councilmember Aslan, our mission statement, please.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Well, thank you, and I'll take the land acknowledgement today. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home. We do have two public participants. We're down to agenda item four now, starting with Ed Schenk.
Ed Schenk, Stormwater Manager. Just really quickly, we have an agenda item later today, I think number eight, for the Water Shit Alliance, the Rio the Flag, and I wanted to introduce quickly a relatively new city employee with Stormwater, Sharon Masak Lopez, who will be a, or who is, not will be, is a senior project manager in Stormwater. So if there are questions about the city side of agenda number eight, Sharon will be our go-to. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ed, and welcome, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Salzberg.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Stacy Salzberg, your city clerk. I would just like to take a quick moment to give an update on our council vacancy process. Last night, the council met in a special work session to hear introductions from 14 applicants. We want to thank all of those applicants for the time that they took and the interest that they have in serving on our city council. The council did request that six individuals move forward in the process for interviews this Thursday at 3:00 PM here at City Hall. Those six individuals are Al White, Alethea Carlin, Joe Washington, Cara House, Mackenzie Jones, and Samantha Stone. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. And I'm not seeing anything on our online participants, so that brings us to agenda item number five, review of draft agenda for the May 3, 2022 City Council meeting. Any concerns, questions about the agenda for next week? I'm not seeing any. Last call. And we are moving on to agenda item number six, our city manager report. City manager, take us away.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. The report came to you this morning. I apologize for the lateness that directly attributed to the long council meeting on Tuesday and the very long retreat meetings on Thursday and Friday, and, you know, sometimes it just happens. I would invite you to read it at your leisure, but we'll give you an overview today. Append to the report are three monthly reports in order from Water Services, Economic Vitality, and Sustainability. I will invite members of those divisions, sections and divisions, to speak to those after I conclude. And then we will also acknowledge some April work anniversaries, and I'm going to ask the two deputy city managers to give me an assist on that. But back to the report. As we typically do, some updates regarding a few departments in no particular order. We start with the Fire Department, some training and events that are noted in the report for you. I will also note, and it's referenced in the report, that as of today, we have put out a public notice, I think it's on our website as well, regarding, just describing briefly, the city's role in the current tunnel fire crisis, and what we've been doing to try to assist in that, and I think there's progress being made. So look for that posting, and thank you to those who were involved in that. And we will continue to watch with great interest the status of that fire. There's a couple of updates from Human Resources as well. A couple of notable updates with respect to our Police Department. Of course, we recognized National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week last week, and that was fun and very well deserved, and we had nice representation from our 911 dispatch team here to be acknowledged. Thank you, Council, for your part in that acknowledgement, that recognition. We are calling out in the report the great duties of Officer Dustin Eberhart, who through his careful, carefully performed skills was able to avoid a situation with a suicidal person. Not to get into unnecessary details, but there's a good outcome to this story, and that is that a life was saved, and the person received the help that was needed. Thank you, Officer Eberhart, for your amazing duties. On the subject of closed calls, I will also point out Officers Jackson Potts and Brant Chapin, I hope it's Chapin, not Chappin, both responded to the call of a potential drug overdose. And in fact, when they arrived at the scene, they did have to enter the facility. Recovered an individual who was in fact experiencing an overdose, was unconscious, and upon administering the necessary lifesaving measures, that individual was resuscitated and is receiving treatment. So again, scary story, good outcome. Thank you to Officer Potts and Chapin. Well done to both of you, and we are very grateful for your lifesaving heroics. There are some updates from the Prose Division as well. All of it's good stuff. The After School Alliance Program. Congratulations to Dan Carrick, who was recently promoted. Nice picture of him in the report. Also, congratulations to Ryan Reynolds, who was also promoted within Prose. We had our retreat at the Aquaplex on Thursday and Friday, and it was so nice to see vitality and action, things happening within the Aquaplex. I hope you appreciated that, as did I and the rest of staff. It was good to be there after more than two years of not being there. So it was a good retreat, but it was also good being in the middle of activity, again, indoors with other people. Some updates from Public Works. Lots going on with Public Works, as always. Some work out at the airport. A shout out to Mania Rivera and Brian George with Facilities and many others for working on solving an issue out at the landfill. Congratulations to all who got the water issue out there taken care of. Concrete crews are now in force. That's a good sign of spring. The Pulliam Airport's new long-term parking lot, you guys, you council members, pardon me, attended a ribbon cutting there a couple of months ago. We made note then that the opening would actually occur later. Well, we're getting close to that. April 29 is, I think, the targeted date. Stay tuned on that. But we're getting close to opening that new facility. Very happy about that. We had the Alliance Meeting on April 15. Thank you, Mayor, for attending. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and others who attended. It was very good. We heard from the Community College about Proposition 438. Had a nice update from our university president as well, and many other topics discussed. Also, last week, and this was noted in advance, a group of us, including the Mayor and Vice Mayor, Councilmember Aslan, went out to the airport to meet our Congressman O'Halloran, had a nice onsite meeting, talking about needs at the airport, specific to the need for heavy snow equipment storage. Doing well on equipment. We're not doing well on how to store that equipment. I guess it's a good issue to have. It was good to see the Congressman, and there's some photos in the report for your enjoyment there. I think with that, I will conclude that report, ask that we have some staff from, we'll start with Water Services, give you a quick update on the monthly that's appended to your report, and then we will go from that into Economic Vitality, and then Sustainability. We'll circle back and do some work anniversaries. Thank you, Council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Lisa Dean, Water Services. Proud to serve Water Services, I might add. You know, it's a very busy time for us now. It would be busy anyway, but with all of the outside factors that are happening, we're faced with even more challenges and solutions. It's an opportunity to solve problems. Some of the problems that we're trying to solve are through rate studies. We have two sets of rate studies, one in Stormwater that's going through for the rate adjustments, and one for the rest of the Water Services, the water reclaimed and wastewater, which are long in coming. We're taking a little different approach on the water side in looking at doing policies separately, and this is going to give us an opportunity for transparency. We can increase our transparency with the public, with council, with what these policies should be before we actually bring in the experts that are going to crunch the numbers to what those numbers really should look like for what our goals and objectives are, and we think it's going to be something positive. On admin and communication side, we're working a lot in budget. You are too, and we're getting there. We're actively involved in the bond committees for wastewater and stormwater projects, and trying to follow all of the changes that are going on. Our Engineering Division had their capital improvement plan approved by the Water Commission last Thursday. We're working on, with sustainability, on some resiliency grants to help provide solutions for floodproofing for residents who are staring down the face of a new set of monsoon storms. We're working on design for flow diversion projects for wastewater, and we all know wastewater, we're going to be hearing a lot about the wastewater issues and the solutions that we're coming up with to solve them. This is simply to keep up with our capacity demands in solids, but there might be a silver lining, and I'm going to talk about that a little later, on how we can turn, make lemonade out of lemons. Our Regulatory Compliance Division had three audits. So ADQ came in unexpected, did auditing at the both water reclamation plants and the Lake Mary Labs, and they all got compliance flying colors. That's a big thing for any audits, but that just shows the day-to-day standards and the day-to-day quality that our divisions and our people really hold to at Water Services. We're working with our business partners, Joy Cone, to monitor for the nitrogen to protect the water reclamation plants. We want to reach out, and we want to help the businesses succeed, and we can all succeed together that way. The annual water quality report is due to come out in May. It will be distributed to every customer. I think they mail them, but we also post them and give them notices. Our communications team is working on the brochures for that this year, so we work with each other a lot. There will be sampling by ADQ on our PFOS and PFOS, those are those forever chemicals, at two of our wells, Sonagua and Fox Glen, at the end of the month. Fact is, tomorrow. April 27, it'll be tomorrow. And it's just good compliance, good, if we don't know what we have, we don't know what we need to be prepared for. So rate compliance is keeping us safe. SCADA. SCADA is kind of the heart and soul of Water Services. Everything that water touches, they touch as well. Council, you just approved the Lake Mary Water Tower Communication Network, so that's the last tower that they have in this network that's going to give us independence in our radio, our radio communications, getting it off the IT and into OT, into an operational network. So that's a cybersecurity measure as well. Sensors. So they're deploying a lot of reclaim pressure sensors now to get some modeling, both for the reclaim system and for moving, as I mentioned, that flow diversion, moving more wastewater into Rio. So by moving the wastewater to Rio, now what do we have to do? More water's coming. We're going to have to plan for that. So SCADA is ahead of that and looking at what do we need to do, and they're planning. They have their own plan, long-term plan, and they're following it. They have their goals, prioritization, and we're getting one more staff member direly needed, and I think that's going to make a lot of difference. There'll be some gray bar training, that's electronics, so we're growing our own. We kind of have to. When we build our own systems and we have our own standards that they have to abide by, we're growing our own people and we're training them, and what we feel is holds up to our quality and to our own standards. SCADA is also helping evaluating impervious surfaces with, on the LiDAR, so they did some LiDAR shots. It was aerial to redetermine where our impervious surfaces are and how those calculations, and we'll be able to take that information and plug that right into our rate study. So everything's going to tie together to be as accurate as possible, as well as the ASBILts. Our GIS person, Sophie, is working on collector apps and really making sure that all of our information, our GIS information, is accurate, and we do have a good asset management inventory. Stormwater. Well, there's a subject you probably have heard about a lot. We're going to hear even more about. We're very happy. We have a grant-supported truck, a new combo truck coming from the DFFM grant cycle, grant funding, based on the emergencies that we had last summer. They're cleaning out drainages, preparing for monsoon season. We just ramp, are pushing through a requisition for design on the East Eldon Retention Basin. That's above Appalachian area, and it will be another basin here to hopefully keep some neighborhoods from flooding. It's going to involve a Kinder Morgan property. They're being very, we're hoping that it's going to work well and that we'll be able to move forward with it, but we have to have a good design to start with. Everything starts with good planning. Sharon Masak Lopez, our new Stormwater extraordinary personnel, just submitted two FEMA HMGP grants for Spruce Wash area, and there's a couple more coming down the pike. So we are all working with that, and Communications is helping with that also. I came from financing grants, so I was trained by the best, SBK, and we're really looking forward to moving forward on some, any grant opportunities we can find. Our Water Services Division was well represented at the recent AZ Water Conference. They did have it in person in Phoenix. Ed and Corinne Smith presented on Stormwater Acid Management, and Aaron Young presented on the Upper Lake Mary Monitoring. So these are all things that, we're really ahead of the game. We're the leaders in Arizona in a lot of this work that's being done, and people want to hear about it. We're already starting engineering meetings at Spruce Wash. They're ongoing, and we're getting ready for the monsoon season early. You know, Stormwater is really looking to transform itself. There are a lot of changes are coming. They want to become a municipal urban water. Stormwater response, more than just respond, just more than just a reaction. We want to be there and be prepared for it. Climate change is coming, whether we like it or not, and they are, we are doing this through rate assessments, updates with impervious surfaces, and master planning and modeling. And all of those efforts are starting to come together, one piece at a time, one grant at a time, one loan at a time, and it will, it will all happen. It's a huge effort and a huge lift, and this team is really putting forth their best. Wastewater Collections is still dancing because they got approved for one-third of a new combo truck for next year's budget, and the following years, hopefully, we'll be able to follow up with the balance of that. They're rather expensive pieces of equipment, and sometimes we have to save for that. Water Distribution, another unsung hero in our realm of the woods. They're there in the middle of the night. If anything goes wrong, they're the first ones on call. They did some overnight work ahead of ADOT's asphalt improvements on Milton Road, and we're working on a break on a cast iron main there at Embassy Suites this last couple of weeks ago. They're there for all the water line shutdowns, and they keep their certifications up. They cross-train. They can be, they get certified in wastewater collections, water collections, to be able to help each other, and we certainly do help each other in that division. Water Production got a little gift on spring runoff. Lake Mary got a peak of 35% full in April. Right now, it's at 33%. However, even with that, the surface water production target is only about 10% of the total water produced. We like to see it. Last year, we had that big snow, and we were closer to 40. So any surface water that we can capture, it's less expensive, and it's, we're able to use it bit rather than draw down on the aquifer. So it puts more pressure on our aquifers. Well, several new wells have been put into action because of this, in Woody Mountain, Lake Mary, and the Town Wells, which would be the interchange in Sonagua. The sedimentation basins are clean biannually. They just completed that. And they're also working on the overhaul for the said basins. That's a big project that we're trying to see where are the best monies that we can utilize to get that project done. So we saw the first instance of success at the Sonagua well. They reconfigured it two years ago, and the blow-off time, the time it takes for the groundwater to become clear when they put a well back into use, was reduced from a couple of days to a couple of hours. So these improvements, little bits at a time, do make a big difference for us. Interbasins actually seeing a little bit of flow from the spring runoffs. We're happy to see that. And the Forest Service has been using our North Res Filtration Plant. The reservoir is kind of a vintage reservoir. We don't use it to store potable water, but we certainly let them use it to dip their buckets in for a fire, and which they have been doing heavily for the tunnel fire. And there's a pre-bid meeting for the raw water pipeline mitigation at Lake Mary. So that's bringing the water from Lake Mary, from the lake, to the treatment plant. Water Reclamation Plants, they're still trying to keep up, still trying to do as much repairs, Band-Aids, and looking, we're actually looking towards these long-term solutions. We did, we are having one employee that left the city for another opportunity. That seems to be a reoccurring scenario sometimes, and we're really struggling to hold and keep our people. Well, they just had electrical system issue that's going to cost 12 to 15 million to fix. Just add that to the list, right? Water Resources and Conservation, of course, it's Water Awareness Month. Did you take the pledge? We hope you did. We are in sixth place now in the Yland Foundation's Mayor Challenge for Water Conservation. We really have an engaged community, and our water conservation staff has been tabling events. They've been, we had tours at the Rio Plant for the first time in a couple of years on April 9. The staff had Water Professionals Appreciation Week. We honored some of our staff with, well, first at the Capitol on April 11, Vice Mayor Sweet was joined. Thank you very much. And we had a local water professional social at the Museum Club on April 15, in which Congressman O'Halloran actually was able to join us and honor our heroes, our water heroes. We gave talks at the Arizona Water Conference on the Non-Net Revenue Water Program, as I mentioned, the Upper Lake Mary watershed monitoring. I also presented on our strategic plan, because that was kind of a driver that's moving all this change that's happening now. So having a plan and staying to it and looking toward that really makes a big difference. So the Water Resources staff, we're talking, we're planning on talking with the Bureau of Reclamation this week on some Water Smart Drought Resiliency Grants, and I talked a little bit about turning lemons into lemonade. So we're going to be doing this flow diversion and moving water out from, that would normally go to Wildcat over to Rio. What we'd like to do is to divert, take some of the water, the reclaimed water, it's all A-plus reclaim. They do nothing but the best, and release those into other drainages of the Rio to, as a recharge opportunity. There were some spring studies that were conducted last year, and it looks like it could be something positive. This would tie in with a planned well drilling at Canyon Del Rio, which is within that recharge area. So if we're lucky, we're not sure, stay tuned, that we could make this a recharge and recovery project, then we might be able to get up to $5 million from the Bureau of Reclamation to offset that as matching grants.
Does that include Sinclair Wash?
Sinclair and Bow and Arrow. Yes. So if that works, it's still going to be the primary, primary reason is for solids capacity. However, you might as well maximize all your opportunities, which is what we're trying to do in every way that we can. I've probably taken enough time. We're a busy division. Thank you for your time. Do I have any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. You mentioned that there's going to be a water rate study, and can you tell me roughly when that will come to council?
Not soon enough. They're still, they're still looking at the RSOQ, so an RSOQ takes a little longer for the actual rate study. So ahead of that, we're looking at the policies. I'm hoping that maybe we'll have the rate study in by, and this is a tatter question, but maybe by July of '23? That would actually go into, if we could, if that is, and I might be a little ambitious with it, but we're doing our best.
So July of next year, not July of this year?
No. Those take a while. They take a while, because there's a lot of public involvement as well, and we want to start early and often. Any other questions?
I'm not seeing any this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Council. We also have our Economic Vitality Monthly Report, and Heidi, would you like to give a brief update on that? Thanks.
Yes. Thank you, Greg. Good afternoon, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Heidi Hansen, interim Deputy City Manager, as well as continuing to serve the Economic Vitality Division with our four outstanding directors. I'm going to make an attempt to share my screen. I'm going to scroll through the report that everybody received quite quickly. I hope that I don't make anyone dizzy by doing so. And I will, if anyone could just know that you see the report, that would be great.
Yep. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, you'll always see that our report starts with our division logo. We are enhancing quality of life 365 days a year. Our division includes the Airport, Community Investment, Library, and Tourism. And some of the highlights that you'll see that are fascinating to us is, for instance, the Airport Shuttle Pilot Program that we're doing with Mountain Line. This actually started about, actually this month, and it is going to go through the end of June, and is with a grant that Mountain Line received. Basically, you can download their Mountain Line Go app. You can book your travel to the airport and home, and you can ride on their paratransit bus, and then you can fly. It's only $2 door-to-door, so we hope that if you haven't tried it, you will in the very near future. Once we see those Once we see those results, we'll be sharing those with the council, and we'll be talking about future. I also wanted to direct your attention to a conference that we've actually been able to secure. Again, it's been the first time, I believe, in four to five years. Our Airport Director Barney Helmick and our Meetings and Events Conference Manager Jessica Young from Discover Flagstaff were able to secure this business for this airport, the Arizona Airport Association Conference. This will bring over 200 members into Flagstaff for a four-day conference, where we all know they don't just conference, they actually go out into the community, and they spend money. So we're very excited about that. Also love to show you these pictures about our ARF crew and how they have continued to host our children and the schools. And here they hosted the De Miguel Elementary School out at the facility, showing them all the things, spraying the water, and letting them know all things about airport rescue safety. I just wanted to also share that we continue to do a lot of marketing to increase employments at the airport, not to mention we took over our marketing of the terminal, and we are actually doing it all in-house. So anybody that is listening, that is a business that would like to have exposure at the airport, please reach out to me at my email address shown right there. And last but not least, on the airport, we want to talk about employments. We were slightly under 2021, and that was because we had a snow occurrence, and so planes were rerouted, flights were delayed, or actually even canceled. But we still have strong, strong employment, as you can see, over 8,000. Moving on to community investment, talk about beautification, arts, and science. They're always busy, this group, and they actually created or installed a new sign at the Two-Spot Locomotive near the visitor center. It had been damaged. They're also working on several projects. It's a long list, some that are good to mention, or we are still working on the airport project, which is going to be called the Coconino Scroll. You had a work session on this. They're actually continuing to work with the Downtown Connection Center on an art glass and sculpture concept. And they're also continuing to work with the library on their new ADA entrance project, that there are several divisions who are working on this. Again, Park Flag had the best month in March since we started the program again, and that means that people realize they have to pay for their parking, which again is only a dollar. And it helps us to have flow in and out of the downtown, which is what we want to see in a retail area such as that. We also did, on Park Flag Recruitment, we've been down several employees, much like Water Services just mentioned, and we will have two candidates. We actually have one candidate that started and another one that will be beginning, so we will be back to three, noting that we normally have six. In Business Attraction, we have the Pye Trade Association. They're actually finding a property that they're going to be securing here. Jack Fitchett's working on that. And then it's fun to talk about Two Men and a Truck. They are expanding their business. It's a moving business to northern Arizona. They already have 350 locations, and it's a service that NAU students and residents actually need, and actually a service that we can hopefully employ NAU students. We're still working on the Airport 31.45-acre parcel, and we're working with Gentera on that. And again, that will come before you again. And then on some other attraction highlights, Water Burger is currently under planned review and making their way through the IDS process. Business retention expansion, a lot going on here. There was a microelectronics manufacturing item that I thought you'd want to talk about. The development team is bringing this trusted microelectronics facility to Arizona. They want to continue to explore maybe bringing it to Flagstaff, so John Salt and Stahl is working with this group. And again, if we can make that happen, he and Jack Fitchett and Dave McIntyre will be bringing that back to council. Library, there are so many stats here, too many to mention, but I want to let you know, we take score of everything. Circulation, how many people have loaned out our materials, what they're looking at, the door counts, things like that. We're actually getting in positive areas again. Some are still in the red, but we're definitely getting back to a more normal type of library patronage. And then we also have that the EFLC, the East Flag Community Library, as well as the Main Library reopened this month to full capacity. We have been working on continuing to donate books, and we actually have opened up our meeting rooms to the public again. That started on April 11th, and all they have to do is make a reservation, which you can find on our website. We continue to add to our Braille items, and you'll see that we added 34 Braille titles to our inventory just recently. And then last but not least, Tourism and Visitor Services, the metrics continue to remain strong. We were basically flat to occupancy in March, but our average daily rate and our RevPAR are in double digits. So what that means is they are driving rates, and they are making money, so we want to see that. Our Marketing Media Relations did, had 24 print articles and 420 digital articles that mentioned Flagstaff and our stakeholders. They were actually able to procure six stories and four media assists, which is just icing on the cake. And these are some fun pictures showing when we're actually live and we're on the newscast. Everything that you see here in blue, when you see this document, you can actually click on this hyperlink and actually read the story about Flagstaff, and I hope that at some point you will do so. Here's some other things about our website. It increased by 52% on our domestic sessions, which is very important to us. And our top performing pages are things to do, and our webcam. I don't know if you know this, but we do have a webcam that sits on the top of the visitor center, and people can actually check out the, the traffic. They can check out downtown, they can check out the weather, and we hope that if you haven't tried our webcam, that you will. We actually continue to get requests for our visitor guide, reaching almost 401 months. And as we go onto social media, we continue to have great strategy on growing it with talking about the newest chef in town. We showing the foodie market and things like that. And as I go and scroll all the way down, International Travel Trade is coming back. Meetings and events and conferences are coming back. We actually just booked two of the leads that she had, which will bring $260,000 into Flagstaff. And then our Visitor Services had the best month ever. They had the record walk-ins, and they had record retail sales. Happy, happy, happy to see that. And Creative Services, which is the marketing arm for Discover Flagstaff and the city, are actually working heavily on the festivals and sweepstakes. And they are also helped as Water Services just, just stated, we talked, helped with them with their April Awareness Month. We actually fixed up a logo for the new Pro's Division, and so on and so forth. And I'm going to leave you with this. We have an actual National Tourism Week that's coming up, and we have a Service Day on May 4th. And if you can join us, we hope that you will. You can reach out to Carrie Nelson, and I can actually put this in the chat so that you can be a part of the Service Day, where we actually clean up litter throughout our community. And if you didn't get to see this, I'll send it along as well. Our IT Division has started doing their month reports and sharing them with the team, and I think that you'll find it incredibly interesting. They are doing amazing work, and they always give you an IT tip. So I think we all can use a tip. They're the experts. And thank you, Greg, for allowing me the time to share this report in great detail.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions, Mayor, Council?
Not seeing any at this time.
Great. Thank you for a wonderful update, Heidi. I think we will also have another virtual presentation, just touching on the highlights, by Nicole. Nicole, are you with us?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Greg. I am the Sustainability Director, and I'm glad to be here just to provide a quick highlight of the Sustainability Office's work for the month of March. I am pleased to announce that the Carbon Neutrality Plan was awarded an Award of Distinction in Climate Action Solutions by Arizona Forward, and more than 500 businesses elected officials and guests gathered in mid-March for the Environmental Excellence Awards. And so we're really pleased to be part of that. In our climate action efforts, I'm really excited to talk about the Youth Climate Advisory Group. And this has been a item on our radar and our really, our to-do list, if you will, for, for a number of years, and, and the pandemic derailed that effort, but we are moving in full force. And the Youth Climate Advisory Group had their first two meetings in March, and the group consists of youth members grades eight through 12, and they are representing schools and Flagstaff, and they are filled with energy and creative ideas. You will be hearing a lot more from them as time progresses. The Flagstaff Climate Ambassadors Program, which the council has heard about in the past, has been used as a model for a proposed climate change community ambassador program in the city of Wisconsin, city, excuse me, of Oshkosh, Wisconsin. And students from the University of Wisconsin are presenting their project to their mayor and their city's sustainability advisory board. So we thought that was a really huge compliment to the work that we've been doing here in Flagstaff and our offerings on education. Along the same lines, Flagstaff's Carbon Neutrality Plan is the topic of a PhD candidate's research for the University of Illinois in Champaign-Urbana. And we've been being interviewed by the, the PhD candidate, and she will be in Flagstaff this summer, and I will be sure that she comes to introduce herself during public participation to the council. Following the council's adoption of the Residential Sustainability Incentive in early March, staff have begun processing the, the first building permit application that took advantage of that incentive, and that is Ora Flagstaff. Ora actually reduced natural gas usage approximately to 1.5% of all total energy usage in the project. It's located within a five-minute walk of a transit line and will be 15% more energy efficient than the city's current code requirement. So as a result of the incentive, the development will be able to increase the number of housing units it provides. Staff is also working with Northern Arizona Healthcare Team to discuss how the proposed new campus can align with the Carbon Neutrality Plan. And along those lines, staff continue to work with Economic Vitality, Legal, and Gentera on 31-acre ground lease to assist them in developing a net-zero energy development and creating a transportation demand management program to reduce car trips to the development. In addition, as part of the Flagstaff's Regional Plan Snap, Snap, oh geez, Snapshot Series, that's very difficult to say, Sustainability Staff offered two webinars in March in partnership with the city's community development staff and Coconino County, and we discussed climate mitigation and climate resiliency to help inform the public about topics that will be addressed in the regional plan. Moving on to our community stewards' litter prevention programming, I just want to provide a few cleanup data points. We had 139 volunteers in March that donated over 260 hours of their time collecting over 200 bags of trash and recycling. We thank all of our volunteers for their work. In our energy programming, the Investment Grade Audit, which is part of the Municipal Energy Savings Contract, or ESCO, continues to progress on schedule. NARESCO delivered their 30% update and have identified several exciting opportunities for deploying energy conservation measures at numerous facilities. And the council will be hearing about the results of the final Investment Grade Audit this summer. The Sustainability Office also partnered with the Electric League of Arizona to offer a one-hour free educational webinar on cold-weather heat pumps. 160 people registered for this first webinar on home electrification and heat pumps. And just as a reminder, heat pumps can be a cost-effective, efficient, and comfortable tool for heating your home. And the webinar covered advances in technologies and the benefits of the heating tool. In Food Systems, applications for plots at each of our community gardens opened in March, and our Home Chicken Keeping and Composting rebate program launched, and we're seeing a lot of great activity and, and interest in that program. In Materials Management, we did complete the Six-Month Trash Left Save More Pilot Program in Ponderosa Trails. And one thing that we found from all the research we did during that pilot, which entailed sifting through recycling materials as they were going into the recycling receptacles, that we had miss commonly recycled on items, including plastic containers, to-go containers, paper coffee cups and lids, Styrofoam and plastic bags. This information will help us improve our educational outreach. And then on March 26th, the Sustainability Office hosted a fix-it clinic at Josie Montoya Community and Senior Center, and volunteers helped fix small household appliances, clothing, electronics, jewelry, and bicycles. Really thankful to all of our volunteers who participated. We were able to divert over 260 pounds of waste from the landfill. And with that, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nicole. Council, any questions? All right, moving right along here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Nicole, for that nice update. We will end up here acknowledging, recognizing some employee work anniversaries, and I will invite the two deputies, Shannon Anderson and Heidi Hansen, to help me here. I'll start and go through the five-through-20-year anniversaries. There's just a handful of them, and then invite the deputies to maybe do a rotation on the 25-year anniversaries. And I think we can wrap this up here in about 10 minutes, Mayor and Council, if that sounds okay. Great. If we can pull up the presentation, next slide, you know, on the five-year anniversaries, we have a few of them. Ryan Scherf, I hope I'm getting that name pronounced correctly, our police officer celebrating his fifth-year anniversary. Congratulations, officer. Alexandra Puccielli, Pucci, Pucciarelli.
Pucciarelli.
Thank you. We just know her as Alex, is also celebrating her five-year anniversary. Congratulations, Alex. And Doug Slover, Water Services Project Manager, also celebrating his five-year anniversary. Congratulations to you, Doug. In the 10-year anniversary column, we have Lee Williams, also with Water Services. He's a supervisor out there. A happy 10-year anniversary to you. 15-year anniversary, this one goes to Dave McIntyre, our Community Investment Director, who, as we speak, is, I think, on his way around the world on a little holiday, well-deserved holiday, with his spouse. Congratulations on your anniversary, Dave, and congratulations on your honeymoon. Also, in the 20-year anniversary, we have Tracy French, our Housing Manager with Finance, celebrating the 20-year anniversary mark. Congratulations to Tracy. Heidi and Shannon, can I lean on you to help me on a rotational basis? Maybe, maybe we can have Heidi start with Pat Stasky, and then Shannon will go to you to cover an individual who goes by the name of Rick Tatter. Joking. And then, and then I'll follow, and then we can just repeat the rotation. Heidi, can you kick this off, please?
Thank you, City Manager Clifton. Pat Stasky, as you can see, he be, he's celebrating 25 years plus with the City of Flagstaff. He began his career 30 years ago as a firefighter. He was promoted to engineer in 1995, captain in 1997, battalion chief in 1999, fire marshal in 2015, and deputy fire chief in 2018. Wow. He earned a master's degree from the Oklahoma State, received his chief fire officer certification, and is an Arizona State Fire Instructor-Trainer. That has been very instrumental in promoting testing for over 25 years. A dedicated, passionate, and caring employee, peer, and leader. He's known for his work ethic, his willingness to help outside of work, and he always shows us that he is unselfish and humble, and that is very true. Chief Gaylord shared, quote, "Pat has been a thoughtful leader for so long. We've enjoyed watching him transition into the grandpa role. During the pandemic, it was not uncommon for Pat to brief the shift with a beautiful grandbaby in his arms. He was quite the sight. Pat is a valued member of the command staff and a pleasure to work with on a daily basis. I'm going to miss him," end quote. Congratulations, Pat, and thank you for serving the city.
So I get the honor of talking about Artad. He's been with the city for 27 years, as we celebrated quite frequently during our budget retreat this last Thursday and Friday. He began his career with our city in April of '95 as an accountant. He then proceeded through the ranks as an accountant II in '97. He joined our customer service team as their manager in 2006. He became the Finance Director in 2009. He became the finance director in 2009, and now is our Management Services Director since 2015. Along with that role, he's also the city treasurer. Rick has received numerous awards, recognizing his performance going above and beyond inner-city values. It was a quality service increase he first received in 2002 and another in 2014. He was also recognized with our WOW Awards. That's what the wonderful outstanding worker is. That was in 2006, and twice in 2012, and again in 2016. I know you all are familiar with our City Managers Excellence Awards. We do those each year here with our city council to recognize our employees. Rick was part of that group in 2013 and 2014. Then, as part of the Division Director Crew, he was recognized as the Leader of the Year in 2019. So when talking to the leaders of our organization, they say, "Rick's service to the city of Flagstaff has been invaluable. He's truly knowledgeable about our finances, revenues, and much more. We're so fortunate to have him part of our team Flagstaff." Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Shannon. We'll go through the, oh, there you go. I was about to suggest we will go through all of these and then do a round of applause at the end, and we can still do that, but of course, Rick always gets his little special I would like to recognize Mike Brem, who started with the Downtown Library 25 years ago plus. Thank you, thank you, thank you. What was it like when he started? The internet was not commonly yet available. Cell phones did not exist. We did have cars and, we did have televisions. At the time, the library had, and I find this remarkable, six standalone computers. Since that time, Mike has been a part of every technology advancement at the library. He's been part of adding new libraries to the district, renovating existing libraries, and expanding the library computer network to now over 450 internet computers. Amazing, quite a jump from six standalone computers. Among his recent accomplishments are implementing Microsoft Office 365 Teams and coordinating the integrated library system migration. He supports the public computer labs as well as the staff computing environment. His overall success is based on his technology skills, but just as importantly are his people's skills. While the computer profession has been largely moved toward each person specializing in one area, Mike's broad experience makes him a generalist and a valuable asset for the library IT team. The Downtown Flagstaff Library was the first public library in Arizona to offer internet access to the public. That is amazing. That happened around 1994. Little note of trivia for you, an early local internet service provider, Infomagic, gave the library one personal computer with a 14.4-kite modem, which would not be able to operate anything we're doing right now. Mike was asked to make a presentation about this at the Arizona Library Association Conference that year, other public libraries soon followed. Well, Flagstaff was a leader in that regard. Mike, thank you for your amazing service, and I really enjoyed that narrative. What a journey, and how far we have come in the world of technology. So happy anniversary to you.
All right, Tyler Boswell. He started back in April of 1995 with the city of Flagstaff as a water meter reader. He applied for and was hired into water distribution on December 15, 1997, as a maintenance worker I, and promoted to a maintenance worker-water meter specialist November of 2000. Tyler has volunteered for many roles within the city. He has taken on the contractor supervisor, asbestos safety coordinator, served many terms on EAC throughout the years, served as a member of the city's safety committee, held his backflow prevention certification for years, all without additional pay. Thank you, Tyler. He enjoys the outdoors, fly fishing, camping, hiking, and hunting. And that is a great smile, Tyler, so thank you so much for your contribution to the city of Flagstaff.
And last, if we might, recognize Mike Stress. He is a member of our Public Works Team. He works in streets. He actually joined our organization as a temporary employee in 1992, joined officially as a maintenance worker in 1993. He was promoted to an equipment operator II in December of 97, and then an operator III in June of 2002. He became one of our supervisors in February of 2015 and has remained a force in that role, for sure. He's been recognized as a wonderful outstanding worker twice in 2008. And Mike, or, excuse me, and Scott Overton shared with us that Mike has become a senior leader that the entire Public Works Team looks up to for guidance and to learn best practices. He brings a high level of quality to everything he does. He's dedicated, he's loyal, and he's a go-to guy for emergency response. So congrats, Mike.
I think with that, I would suggest now would be a good time to applaud all of Mayor, Council, thank you for your attention for that. That concludes the manager's report, the monthly updates, and our work anniversaries. Any questions?
You, City Manager. Any questions, Council? I'm not seeing any, though. So thank you very much for a thorough report, as always, and work anniversaries and recognizing all of our devoted employees and all the work they do for us. All right, that brings us to agenda item number seven. This is the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT North Central District Seasonal Project Update. Mr. Barrett?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm Rick Barrett, city engineer and the engineering director. As you noted, this is going to be a seasonal project update for the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT. As a reminder, roads that are ADOT jurisdiction in the Flagstaff region are Highway 89, 89A, US 180, Route 66, which is also known as B-40, and then our two interstates, which are Interstate 40 and Interstate 17. With that, we have our district administrator, Brendan Foley, with us tonight. Good evening, Brendan.
Thank you, Rick. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I do appreciate it. As Rick mentioned, my name is Brendan Foley. I'm the new ADOT North Central District Administrator, and pleased to be here. So I just wanted to take a little bit of your time to talk to you about the North Central District in general, and then some of the projects that we have going on currently near Flagstaff, as well as a couple of projects that we have coming up in the near future. So the North Central District for ADOT is roughly 23,000 square miles. Just for, to give you an idea of how size, or how big that is, it's kind of roughly the size of the state of West Virginia. We have roughly 2,800 lane miles within our district, which would be equivalent to a trip from LA to New York City. And then we work with a number of stakeholders, which can include national parks, national forests, counties, municipalities, and other folks. As a district, currently this year, we have approximately $150 million worth of construction going on throughout our district, which, you know, as you can see on the map there, maybe not well, but encompasses the area from about Camp Verde to the south on I-17, up through Payson, through Tubus City, up to the Utah border, and then west to the junction with Nevada and Utah. We have a little piece of I-15 right there, you know, connecting Nevada and Utah through the state, and then the Grand Canyon and all the other scenic areas in Northern Arizona. So some of the projects that we have going on right now that might be of interest to you, I think everybody's well aware of the Rio de Flag Bridge Replacement Project, which has been going on last year and then into this year. That was about a $5 million project that removed and replaced the old Rio de Flag Bridge. Project is about 95% complete right now, and we expect to have that done by about June 10th this year. So our contractor is working on doing some excavation and installing some soil and nail walls right there, and then they'll have to backfill all that and restore the channel there. Traffic restrictions relatively minor this year. I know we had the long closure last year that everybody, I'm sure, remembers, but just some lane closures this year for material deliveries and such. The pictures there, on the top right, you can see, this was last year, again, preparing for the seven-day closure that we had to remove the bridge. On the left, that larger picture is actually during our closure. The bridge had been removed at this point, and we're in the process of installing the girders for the new bridge. And then on the bottom right there, you can see that they're getting ready to place the concrete on the approaches to the bridge, as well as the final deck for the bridge. So all that's been complete now. Picture you saw on the very first slide there was from the city hall side, looking at the bridge with the new paint and the rustication on the barrier. Second project that we have going on is on Interstate 40 to the west of town here. This is at the West Flag TI Route 66 there. This project, about $4.5 million to replace the two bridges, one eastbound and one westbound on Interstate 40, over the Route 66 there. This project, again, mainly completed last year. We have a little bit of work to finish up this year. Expect to be done with this around the end of June this year. We have some final paving that is going to take place, and then placement of the final friction course riding surface and the final pavement markings. So right now, we're still in winter shutdown and waiting for temperatures for the friction course, but once we get started on that, likely in May or early June, we'll have some single-lane closures to accommodate that work. In the pictures here, you can see on the left-hand side, the old bridge, half of that, and then on the right half of that picture, the new bridge. So the old bridge is an old girder bridge that was constructed in, I believe, 1966-ish. New bridge is a box-beam bridge, single-span, expect that to be in place for a long time. On the right-hand side there, again, the crews are placing steel and getting ready to pour the deck. In the top right, you can see that they have just finished placing that deck, and I'm sure everybody's probably been over that bridge at some point since it was completed last year. Another big project that we have going on up here that started last year, and we anticipate getting the bulk of completed this year, is our Interstate 40 paving that stretches from Interstate 17 to Walnut Canyon Road. Again, the $16 million project is rehabilitating the pavement along I-40. We've got some deep repairs that we're doing in some of those areas that have been pretty badly deteriorated over the years. We're removing 15 inches of the old asphalt and concrete pavements, and then replacing those all the way back up to the top with new pavement, and then placing a final base course over that, followed by a final riding surface. This project currently right now is about 58% complete, but we expect to have all the paving done by late October this year. As I'm sure folks have noticed, we do have 24-hour lane closure set up right now. You can see in the picture, the larger picture down there toward the bottom, lane closure set up, that's for the deep removal and replacement of the asphalt sections in the travel and passing lanes for public safety, make sure that nobody gets hurt. Once that's all complete, again, we'll be replacing the surface throughout the length of the roadway between I-17 and Walnut Canyon, and then placing our final riding surface and final pavement markings. So on the top left of that picture as well, you can kind of see the crews placing the asphalt. This was from last year, again, but doing the same thing this year. Another project folks might have seen is along I-17 right now, between the city and about the county line to the south. Excuse me, this one goes down to Maguireville for the rest area there. Now, this is part of the governor's initiative to expand broadband throughout the state. So this $8 million project right now is installing a seven-way multi-duct conduit for future use. One of those conduits is being occupied by ADOT for intelligent transportation, the dynamic message boards and things like that that you see, and then the others will be available for other uses. This project, again, we expect to be completed sometime in June this year, maybe give or take a little bit in there, just depending on whether and how quickly they can get things done. But in the pictures here at left, it's really the same kind of scope of work that's going on this year. You can see contractor placing the trench in the shoulder of the roadway on the far right, placing the duct inside the trench, and then in the center there, placing the slurry backfill just to seal it all up and hold everything in place. Those all that we had kind of carrying over from last year. Things starting new this year, this is on I-40, A-1 Mountain Road. This bridge is going to be replaced, again, about a $5 million project, completely replacing this old four-span bridge built in the '60s with a new GRS IVS. It stands for Geo-Synthetic Reinforced Soil Integrated Bridge System. So the picture at the top there is the old steel girder bridge, and the picture at the bottom there is a rendering of what the new bridge will look like once it's complete. This particular method allows us to get in and construct a new bridge relatively quickly. We'll have a 40-day full closure of the A-1 Mountain roadway while we're doing this work, where we can get in, get the bridge completely done, and get back out of there, and then everybody will be able to enjoy the new bridge and hopefully have minimal impact. And we did also use this, the same process last year, a few years back, trying to remember, at Meteor City, and it was very successful, same contractor doing it. So went well, and we expect this one to go well also. One that was mentioned earlier, I believe, that is probably more immediate to most people is Milton Road here in town. This project got started, I want to say, last month. It's about a $3.5 million rehabilitation of the pavements on Milton Road, as well as some sidewalk curb and gutter and sidewalk ramps. Generally, we'll be having single-lane overnight closures for the paving and for the sidewalk work. Some of the sidewalk work has already taken place. A lot of that on the northbound side has been completed, and then we'll get back on the southbound side. We'll have some temporary sidewalk closures and bus stop relocations in association with that, but those are going to be short-term. The top picture there is just from Forest Meadows looking to the north. I'm sure people are familiar with the condition of the pavement there. On the bottom, though, you can see that kind of a typical section of what we're planning to do, we'll be milling out about three and a half to four and a half inches of pavement, just depending on the location, and replacing all that to provide a nice new riding surface through town. And then in this picture, this is the intersection of Milton and Plaza Way. And just to give you a little bit of an idea of some of the things that we're doing here That's a good question. We may have the wrong intersection in here, so I apologize for that. But the intent is the same, so I apologize if I got the wrong picture. But on the right-hand side there is the plan for Plaza Way, and what we're doing is trying to straighten out the crosswalk just a little bit, as much as possible in that area. We can't really, because of right-of-way constraints, affect the location of the ramps currently much, but we're trying to use the striping to take some of that distance out of it. We're also, if you can see in there, taking advantage of the width that we do have and trying to maximize, I guess, our ability to provide a striped shoulder in there and then a striped buffer between the through and right turn lanes. So trying to address some concerns that had been expressed previously. So we're doing as much as we can with that, with the current pavement and features that we have available to us right now. Couple upcoming projects, since I put this together, actually, SR 89A in Oak Creek has started with some traffic control, but we are going to be doing some work between roughly the Switchbacks and Sedona. We have three different projects in there being done by a single contractor. One of them will stabilize slopes and reestablish drainage patterns, kind of at the south end of the Switchbacks there, just north of Pump House Wash Bridge. This will, is intended to contain some future rock and mudslides, make sure that we don't have to close the road for cleanup and issues like that, and keep people safe. We're also replacing the deck on the Pump House Wash Bridge. replacing the deck on the Pump House Wash Bridge, and we have some traffic control in place for that right now, which is reducing that entire area from roughly Myopols 389 to about 387 to a single lane with signals controlling traffic in each direction through there. And then the last project, project that we have in that area is a rockfall mitigation, which is going to remove loose rock, bolt some of those rocks to make sure that we don't hopefully have any rockfall in the future, and then remove a large overhanging rock slab at the south end of Myopols 375, just north of Sedona. So throughout the duration of this project, for this year at least, we're going to have some single lane closures, like I mentioned, through the end of October. Contractors allowed up to 10 overnight closures in that location at the north end of the project to facilitate the deck replacement just because of the narrowness of the road and the curvature through the bridge there, and then facilitate some of that other work for the rock, or the, excuse me, the erosion control work. And then at the south end of the project, when we do the blasting to remove that overhang, the contractor is allowed up to five daytime closures. Those are going to occur sometime between mid-May and late July of 2023, and we'll put out information on those, when those are going to occur and what detour routes are available, that sort of thing, make sure everybody has as much notice as we can possibly provide there. Minimum of seven calendar days, though. Sorry. One of the other projects that we have going on is I-17 southbound pavement preservation. This will be similar in scope to what I described on I-40 recently. This one, we're expecting to start sometime in May of this year and potentially go through mid to late 2024, just depending on weather and how quickly we can get some of that work done. But it is fairly significant. We're reconstructing about 10 miles of the right travel lane, which is going to, similar to I-40, require the contractor to remove 15 to 19 inches of the old pavements and then replace all those back up. So we're going to have some significant lane closures throughout there, closing the right-hand lane, having traffic in the left lane, which will unfortunately cause some delays, but we're going to get that done as quickly as we can. And then, final project we have coming up that I wanted to mention to you. This is in design right now, but the I-17 JW Powell Airport Road Bridge was previously programmed for a deck replacement. That was reprogrammed not that long ago to be a complete bridge replacement. This is a spot improvement that is in development right now, working with our designer on designing that new bridge, and then anticipate advertising that fall next year and getting into construction in the spring of 2024. That was all I had, so thank you, and if you have any questions, you have to try and answer those.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Foley. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor Brennan. I really appreciate it. I'm glad you mentioned that I-17 Bridge. John Wesley Powell, at the end there, I was going to ask you about it. We became aware of it during the budget retreat. Full disclosure, I live over there in the neighborhood and access Fort Tuttle all the time, as do many residents throughout that area of Flagstaff. The Sheep Tunnel there is an amazing new resource to help get pedestrians and dog walkers and runners and cyclists through the area. But there's ample opportunity and need and reason for folks to be using that bridge as well, especially with the swift amenity over on the corner there. I would love to see, moving forward, especially when we do any bridge replacements, that we prioritize dedicating pedestrian and bicycle access to those spaces. Is that part of the plan for you guys right now, and how do we advance that conversation if it's not?
So, as I mentioned, this was originally programmed as a deck replacement, which would be in kind. It was subsequently reprogrammed just because of the condition of the bridge as a full bridge replacement, but as you can well imagine, the cost of a bridge replacement versus a deck replacement is significantly higher. So, to answer your question as directly as I can, those are things that we're talking about, but we have to work within the funding that we do have available. So, this is a spot improvement for ADOT, and as much as we are able to address those things, we will, and we will look into them. But I can't stand here right now today and tell you that we're going to have 10-foot-wide footst trail or raised sidewalks, things like that, unfortunately.
Yeah, I understand that, and thank you very much for listening. I hope you bring those notes back to the team. It was really neat to see those additional improvements go into the Fourth Street overpass. And as much as we can reproduce those new and important amenities going forward, I think it's just added value to the project that's already going on, and I'm really glad to hear that those improvements are in the works.
So, if I may, Fourth Street Bridge was an excellent collaboration between ADOT and the city, and a lot of work had gone into that with everybody, and there was a share in funding there as well. There may be opportunities, if the city is desirous of doing that, to potentially put some funds in the project from the city side and address some of those things. As far as, again, ADOT's perspective, though, that is a spot improvement. We'll do everything we can with the fund that we have available, but we don't have a significant amount of funding to do what was done on Fourth Street.
Great. Well, we'll get that conversation rolling, and there's just a data point for you to bring up the ladder.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Shumani?
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Brendan. Thank you so much for being with us and presenting today. It's very nice to meet you and get this presentation. Audra and I had met once, and she had mentioned having a regular meeting and update to council, and here we are doing that, and that's just a great sign, and I just really appreciate that about our partnership with ADOT. So thank you for being here and your work and your update tonight. Just a couple quick questions for you. So on Milton, we were, Audra and I and the team have been working on trying to increase the margins to be as wide as it could be. Is that still part of the plan?
Yes, Councilman, that is part of the plan. We have taken as much advantage of the pavement that we have existing as possible, reduced the lanes somewhat within reason, and provided striped shoulders where we can, as well as buffer space between the right turn lane and the through lane in the areas that we have available to do that with.
Okay, very good. And then, Brendan, if it made any sense at all, that 13-foot middle lane, you know, I'm just thinking about, I ride on Milton almost, more than I'd like to admit, and it's definitely sketch, and I'm really looking forward to these improvements, but every foot really counts, even every six inches. So, I'm not sure if there's anything that can be done with that center lane at this point, that's 13 feet, but just a thought that came to mind as I was watching your presentation. Do you have any comment on that?
So, Councilman, I appreciate the question. I don't know if you can see the picture that I have up currently, but in this location in particular, we do have that center left turn lane or center two-way left turn lane area shown as 10 feet, and then the lane's reduced to 11 feet to try and use some of that available width to stripe shoulders, and again, that buffer lane between the through lane and the right turn lane. So yes, we have taken those things into account and tried to take as much advantage as possible of the width that we do have existing there.
That's great. Okay, very good. I really appreciate that. You know, we at the city are really wrestling with our priorities, and you know, is it the level of service for vehicles, or is it the comfort needs of our most vulnerable and our bikes and ped? And without getting into that, it would be great at some point, Brendan, to have you come back, if possible, if this is appropriate, and have you speak about 66 and Lone Tree. There's been a lot of talk about Lone Tree and Butler, but I've really been intrigued to learn more about where ADOT is and what can we negotiate with you and work out with you to ensure that that intersection is the best it can be for our priorities, which I believe are bike and pedestrians.
Thank you. Yes, I guess when we're invited to come and speak on subjects, we try and accommodate that when feasible.
Very good. And the other seat I'll plant with you, and then I'll let you be, is the Buell University conversation we're having. That will be, council will be discussing that mid-May, but I'm hopeful that we'll have direction to then further discuss that with you and ADOT. So, stay posted, and I look forward to future conversations with you and our work with ADOT, and we appreciate all that you do in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumani. Councilmember McCarthy?
Is the tunnel underpass for pedestrians and bicyclists under Milton in the area of Target, is that still in the works, or?
I don't believe that's an ADOT project.
Okay, it's under an ADOT road, though, is it not?
Correct. That would be...
Uh-oh, here comes Rick.
I'll take that one. Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, that is associated with our Milltown project, so the city will be delivering that work. It's part of the P3 agreement that we've all talked about. But yeah, the city will be designing that project. We'll have a CMAR in front of council. I believe we're still scheduled for May 17th to have that guaranteed maximum price to move forward with that project in front of council for your consideration on that one, but the point I'm making is that we will be seeking permit from ADOT for that work.
Okay, I appreciate that. You'll be working together.
Absolutely.
But it's primarily a city project.
Thank you. Anything else from council? I'll just note that for, just to kind of back up Councilmember Aslan here, the JW Powell Bridge is going to be very important. As you know, potentially, the hospital will be relocating out there. We're going to be extending JW Powell with, you know, protected bike-ped options and just preparing for the future. Though those projects are down the road, we'd love to be able to collaborate on the, you know, what that bridge might look like and ensure that we continue with the values we've set forth around our bike-ped options for that area. So, we'd love to be able to collaborate, and yeah, we'll definitely be in touch on that front, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think that is it for this agenda item. Appreciate you being here. All right, that does bring us down to agenda item number eight, Draft Rio de Flag Watershed Management Plan Work Session.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Sarah Decter. I am the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff. I'm here tonight with my colleagues in the Stormwater staff and in collaboration with what is called the Watershed Alliance for the Rio de Flag. In 2018, the city began by supporting a grant application that was submitted by the Friends of the Rio to the Bureau of Reclamation for a Phase 1 Water Smart Grant. That grant was for the purpose of forming a watershed stakeholder group, much like the Friends of the Verde River or the Friends of Oak Creek, and putting together a watershed plan. Ed Schenk and I have represented the city throughout this partnership, and now Sharon Masak Lopez is taking over some of those roles for the Stormwater Group. We are happy to introduce Rick Miller, who is representing the Watershed Alliance for the Rio de Flag, and will present to
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you taking the time to talk to us. As Sarah said, this is the, we're going to show you some of the results of more than two years of work, based on a Bureau of Reclamation grant that we got to study the watershed, Rio de Flag watershed, and develop a plan and watershed group. I'd like to start off by showing you a short video, and then we'll move into a short PowerPoint.
The way I see the Rio de Flag, it sort of runs through the heart of our community, and it connects us together.
Biologically and ecologically, it's a link all the way through town. We kind of tend to gravitate towards the stream channel.
You know, I think water has a really kind of strong place in our hearts.
Folks just walk it, just to feel the environment, because the Rio de Flag fosters all this type of growth. It's just like a little linear park.
Kind of tend to live in Flagstaff, and we think that, oh, everyone hikes the Futs Trail, and everyone knows about the Rio, but what we learn with anywhere from kindergarteners to sixth graders is that really that's not the case, and a lot of people don't know about the Rio de Flag. They don't know we have the Rio de Flag, and they, you don't even know we have the Futs Trail.
The Rio de Flag is the main drainage running through Flagstaff. Everything in Flagstaff drains into it. The watershed above Flagstaff drains into it, so although it's a femoral channel, it runs.
You can see, if you start at the headwaters of the Rio, these beautiful, large floodplains that look kind of like grassy meadows, but have really wet soils and productive grasses. And then we, if you move downstream, you can see parts of the Rio dive into really deep canyon. We also see that the Rio is relatively undeveloped compared to the city, and it's kind of a ribbon of habitat where wildlife can move up and down and throughout the area.
The Futs Trail, the urban trail system, and the Rio de Flag were connected right at the birth of the urban trail. There were places like the city pond here that was full of trash. We all know what Sinclair Wash in the area south of town looked like. Through usage, people appreciate what's there, and when they appreciate what's there, they take care of what's there, and maybe they even foster its upkeep in a way that reproduces what it might have been naturally.
A lot of people enjoy riding their bikes, running, wildlife viewing, nature walking all along the Rio, and I think there's even more potential for that if we expand the trail system.
A lot of times in places like Flagstaff, we get to enjoy the outdoors, but the Rio brings it right into our backyards. And so, almost wherever you walk in Flagstaff, the Rio is gonna, you're gonna be close to the Rio.
I think a lot of times when we talk about the Rio de Flag, we think that it's specific to one neighborhood or one area of town, but the fact of the matter is, the Rio de Flag runs throughout our entire city. And when there is a flood, a 100-year flood with the Rio de Flag, we're looking at a cost of a billion dollars to repair the damage that would have been caused in that flood. So I think it's really important that when we talk about the Rio de Flag flood control project, we understand that it impacts everybody in the City of Flagstaff. You know, sometimes when you drive through the south side neighborhoods, you wonder, why does the neighborhood look like this? The reason being is because the neighborhood was literally thrown into a floodplain. And with this flood control project, we're going to be able to take an entire neighborhood out of a floodplain that was artificially created.
It's a long project, it's been going on forever. It comes and goes, but every time it comes, some decision is made and a different level is reached, and it's hard to go backwards. So, I think it's very important to be engaged in that and talk about it.
When we talk about the Rio, we spend a lot of time talking about the damage that's going to be caused if there's a flood. What I hope the citizens of Flagstaff see is that with this flood control project being completed, we're going to have a beautiful riverway through our city.
This area before we started on the restoration was about six-foot-tall Scotch thistle, really difficult to even walk through, really poor habitat quality, really poor aesthetic quality, and really poor recreational quality, because nobody would come here. About 10 years ago, people got interested and saw the potential of what Picture Canyon might be. We had just a huge amount of citizen support. You know, people came out, 50, 60 people at a time to come help plant stuff, pick up trash.
One of my favorite things is taking students out to Picture Canyon and showing them the waterfall where the Rio kind of goes over, the only natural...
The only natural waterfall in Flagstaff. And I think the awe, you know, if something is, maybe as small as a waterfall, um, is really magnificent.
Picture Canyon, which once was kind of a tragedy, is now a true amenity.
If we come together as a community to care for our river and create more of an amenity out of it, we will definitely reap the benefits.
Anywhere we take students to and we hit the Rio, uh, the reaction is always of excitement, of wonder. Every time when people learn about it, they're excited about it.
I live along the Rio. It is the one place I look at every day. I have to say that crossing the Rio de Flag on my way to work, you know, the highlight of the morning.
Thank you. That was, uh, that film was done by Britton Davis, who's a local school teacher. And Malcolm Alder, who some of you may know, did the drone work on it. So it was all free and very well done, I think. What got us into this was the realization that there was a lot of work going on on the Rio de Flag. Some of it was mentioned in the video, like Picture Canyon. And a lot of people were doing really neat things. And another great example is what's been done with the Futz Trail along the Rio de Flag. But there wasn't any coordination. There wasn't any attempt to make things work together. And that's what we're talking to you about today, is an attempt to make all these things work together. Not to control things, but to make sure it's coordinated and people get a chance to talk before we implement something that might impact somebody else's project. You know, one thing that we realized, and, uh, Mayor Evans was a good example. She said one time she knew, didn't, when she was growing up here, she didn't think about the Rio de Flag as being anywhere other than in her backyard. And it was literally in her backyard. But she didn't realize that it went through all these other places. And I made a list here, and it starts out with, on the LaRue Springs, some of you will know. Goes through Cheshire, by the museum in northern Arizona, Parlo's Fort Valley Road. Goes pa- into Francis Short Pond, goes between the city hall and the library, through South Side, down past the Willabend Educational Center, under the, well, through the I-40 wetlands to Foxland and Continental, back under the interstate to Picture Canyon, and then out to Logan's Crossing, and finally down to Little Colorado. We don't realize a lot of times that what all these things have in common is a connection to the Rio de Flag. And we think if we put a little thought into that, we can do a lot of good. So jump into the PowerPoint. Well, we did get started with a grant from the Bureau of Reclamation. They have a Water Smart program. It's in two parts. The first part pays for planning and informing the watershed group. And then the second part hopefully helps with implementation. So that was our two goals, create a watershed stakeholders group. We're still working on that. That's part of what, why we're here today is to invite the city to more formally join us in that. And then also to develop watershed plan. We're at the point now where we have a draft watershed plan. This is a sketch map in case you aren't familiar with where the Rio flows, starting on your left with LaRue Springs and ending up on the right-hand side, flowing out toward the Little Colorado River. We began with a series of interviews with stakeholders, people that were interested in what was going on in the Rio. Everybody from homeowners to, um, the local watershed experts, uh, and then members of the public who were just in- interested. We went from that to a series of six public meetings. We planned for them to be in person, but because of COVID, they became a series of six, uh, Zoom meetings. Uh, we had a number of really good speakers. Uh, each session was sponsored by a different organization. And then, uh, that took us from November of 2020 through February of 2021. We developed a set of goals, working with all of the people that were at those meetings. And we also, we asked people questions. And the point of asking the questions was to get some of the background we wanted to use in forming the plan. So the question here was, what was the biggest threat? You could see people thought the biggest threat was drought. Uh, but there were a wide range of answers. And that was characteristic of all these six public meetings and all the questions we asked. A good example is here, we asked people what their main interest was. There was a lot of interest in restoration, management, and ecology. Those took up 50% of the answers. But look at the breadth of what else people said. You know, on-the-ground projects, cultural and heritage projects, uh, community education, equality and social justice, hydrology and flow, planning and policy, beauty and aesthetics, climate change and geology. All this from asking people what their most, what the greatest interest they had in the Rio de Flag. Another thing we did was ask people at every session for projects they'd like to see done along the Rio. We ended up with a list after we compacted them and eliminated the duplicates. We ended up with 116 site-specific projects and an additional 25 projects that were watershed-wide. So we developed some priorities, worked through a process for prioritization. Um, these are some of the priority projects. And they, the first five were the museum fire restoration. I think you can generalize that to fire restoration, since we've had other fires since the museum, uh, museum fire. Trash and weed removal. This one's worth mentioning just because we got a lot of very specific places where people said, we want you to come pick up trash here. Or we want you to do weeding here, take out the Scotch thistle. The use of reclaimed water for riparian restoration was a high priority for people. That fits in really well with one of the city's priorities, to do groundwater recharge. There's a chance for us to overlap there and work together. There was also real interest in some of the other washes besides the Rio de Flag. And the example we put on here was the Sinclair Wash connectivity and restoration. There's also an interest in a channel maintenance program. Then this is the next 10 of water rights research, planning for aesthetic and riparian values, spring studies, spring restoration, riparian protection, meadows, and that one's got me a little stumped. I'm not quite sure what to do with that. Increased awareness of springs and wetlands and luvial plains. A state of the watershed panel, and a suggestion was made that we do an annual Rio de Flag festival. Another suggestion was that, working with the city, we try and form a water advisory board specific to the Rio de Flag. And then in general, connectivity and restoration of the watershed channels. So the benefit to the city in having this alliance is having the coordination, I talked about a minute ago, and being able to bring these projects together and all the good work that people have been doing for years along the Rio. Coordinate it, see if we can't gain, gain a little synergy by talking to each other. So what we're asking of you and of the city is participation in the WRF, the Watershed Association for the Rio de Flag, including some help in making it work. A master participating agreement for the WRF, which is patterned on other existing city agreements. It's been drawn up in draft and we'll have to work through the process of getting it done. The point is having a formal way to, to work together. And finally, cooperation on projects of interest to the city with appropriate levels of approval. And what I mean by that appropriate levels of approval is, if we're going to do a trash pickup, we don't feel like we need to come back and talk to you all. Okay? If we're going to do a project that's going to cost a lot of money or take a lot of the city staff time, we do feel like we need to come back. And it's going to, you know, we'll have to work that out over time, and your staff will be driving that. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions on this? Councilmember Aslan? Jump on in.
All right. Thank you. Um, this is really exciting. It's, uh, good to see Paul Byer in the audience as well. If, if you guys need a, a council liaison for this project, uh, look me up. It's maybe a process we want to deal with collectively, but, uh, to throw my hat in the ring, um, to play a role like that for something as worthwhile as this. I, I wanted to get kind of specific here just for a second while it was on my mind. And this is making me feel my age as a one-termer here on council. But, um, back when we were dealing with McGrath, uh, and that new project that was going to go up near the Grove, uh, which is well under development now, they made a verbal commitment to partner on, uh, the restoration of the Sinclair Wash. And I want to make sure you guys, uh, try to follow up with that. I don't know where they're at in their process. This may be more of a thing that they can leverage once they have residents moved in there and can sort of, uh, advertise the opportunity to volunteer. But I know there's some, uh, bird blinds down there, um, below the, uh, on the cliffs below that development, uh, that will need some ongoing, um, upkeep and maintenance. And, uh, just remember that they, they committed to being a resource, um, for, for the Sinclair Wash area down there. And of course, uh, never forget to follow up with any of you as a potential, uh, pool of volunteers and, you know, uh, student projects, uh, grad work, and just some good science coming out of there, uh, and some good education. Uh, so those partnerships are really exciting. I'm really encouraged to see, uh, the, the holistic approach to this finally taking shape. And, you know, uh, this is all coming out of a scenario in which, I haven't been here that long, but I've been here long enough to know that there was some contentious, uh, viewpoints about how to move forward with the Rio de Flag. And this is one of the greatest successes I've seen being on council, is watching the community, um, and, and through the city's, uh, process of transparency and new leadership, just really be able to, uh, explore where our values and our ideas for this amenity synergize and to start working together, um, in tangent with, in tandem with each other. And it's just a very encouraging, feel-good, uh, uh, momentum and, and progress that we're seeing here. And I'm, uh, would be happy to continue to be a part of this process and, uh, however we can formalize it all the more further and make it sustainable into the future and get those recharge flows going so that this riparian corridor really returns. I don't know if it will ever be perennial, um, but, uh, at, uh, at least an annual riparian amenity for the city, uh, through different stretches of town is really something special and something we can all be proud of.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And even more so, thank you for all the people, Kelly Burke and a lot of my friends, um, that have been taking this so seriously. This is a unrealized gem, right through the middle of our city. And not just our city, but the whole area. And I think that the restoration and protection of the Rio de Flag in any way we can in this wonderful riparian area. And of course, it has to be done in a way compatible with Rio de Flag, uh, project. But, um, I, I'm very supportive of, of anything we can do to help the restoration and protection. If that means joining the Watershed Alliance, I'm 100% there. And, uh, I'm very supportive. I'm actually excited about this. When I saw this agenda item and I read through the packet, I just, I got excited. I, I, uh, I, you may not know, but I've spent some of my life working on river projects and, and I have a very deep appreciation for their value. They're like a ribbon of life. I mean, if you, if you look through an ecosystem, where is the life? It's at the streams. And it's, it just concentrates there. The water source and, and the vegetation, they attract wildlife and of, you know, from little things up to big things. So anyway, I won't go on and on. I'm very supportive of the city joining, uh, with our other friends in this Watershed Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight and your, your service on this. That video was fantastic. I hope that that keeps out in the community so everyone can see that. I, too, am very excited about this. I would like to, on a personal level, um, get involved. But on top of that, I am very supportive of all three, uh, ways that you are looking for direction from the city getting involved. And I just really thank you for your commitment. And this is exciting. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that video is online if you want to find the website. And it also, there is, uh, video online from each of the six public meetings if you're interested enough to look at, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you for being here. And, um, individually speaking, I want to be part of the Friends of Rio de Flag. So sign me up for membership and volunteer work. And I do look forward to the next phase of the watershed planning and finalizing the watershed plan and formalizing the relationships around future implementation with the city as an active, uh, as a proactive partner, as well as, um, a potential of, uh, funding partner. So we are in the middle of our budget present, uh, budget, uh, development. And, uh, I would actually, uh, seek, uh, council support in, um, finding, uh, finding funding allocation for, um, um, the Rio de Flag watershed planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Well, it sounds like you got a lot of Friends of the Rio up here on the dais.
Yeah.
I, I, like my colleagues, I won't belabor, but I really appreciate all the work that you all have done on this and the holistic views. And I think we should be partners with you all through this process, and I look forward to that collaboration.
Thank you.
So with that, I think we have pretty clear direction on this one.
Let me see if I can get out of there.
Thank you. Yep. Yep. And with that, we're going to take a, a, a brief break. Let's say 15 minutes or 16 minutes, so 5:05 PM. Be back here and we'll talk flooding. Thank you. We're up and running. Excellent. Well, then we are down to agenda item number nine, our flood projects update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Scott Overton, Public Works Director. Uh, with me this evening are a number of our most favorite friends to talk museum flood response with you. We come to you monthly to not only give yourselves an update on the latest and greatest in the Spruce Avenue Wash, but just for our general community to have, uh, the latest updates on everything through the flood area. We're going to go through our typical agenda, but this week we do have a couple of slides that we will highlight. Uh, tonight, we have a new slide and a new group that we're going to, uh, introduce you to about financial planning and grant submissions. We, of course, will cover our capital mitigation projects and get you those updates on those important projects. We have some more information about the preparation for our upcoming '22 season. And then, of course, uh, we've been working fairly diligently this last month on the emergency operations and the incident management team, uh, structures. So we'll report out to you on how that work is progressing. Of course, at the end, we'll be happy to take any questions. And, uh, all of the, um, presenters this evening will be fielding those for you. This first one, uh, I'm going to turn over to Rick Tatter to introduce our new financial focus group.
We're done.
You're not going to live that down. We're just going to keep doing it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City-
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmember, Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. Yeah, we do have a new group together that's meeting quite frequently now. It's the Museum Flood Financial Focus Group. We're focusing on the finance and planning and related processes and all the financial resources we're going to need in this year and what we've accomplished in the last year when the floods started occurring. We established this mid-April, and I'd like to thank Deputy City Manager Anderson for pulling this group together. It's a, it's a great group. It includes our Water Services Division, our Public Works Divisions, City Manager's Office, and Management Services Division with Finance and our Grants and Contracts and Emergency Management sections. We're doing a lot of discussion related to funding sources for all the activity going on with our stormwater funds, our HER funds, and those public needs that we have. We are focusing on the costs that we will need for preparing for this upcoming summer flood events, the preparation and where the costs will come from and paid for and all that type of work. Looking at the short-term mitigations, how we're going to fund some of the activity we're doing now as well as the contracts we already have approved. The emergency response need, once we get into action and hopefully we don't have a flooding event, we want to make sure we have the, the people and the resources and the final financing pieces in place as we approach this summer and the monsoon season. And also the flood mitigation projects. As we go forward, we know there's a lot of federal funding out there that we are going to search hard for. We'll do probably a stormwater rate increase that will also fund some projects through debt. And potentially the general obligation bond may help us further our mitigation within the museum flood area. So we feel this team is a, is a great team to bring all the components together and all the needs and understand the financial implications of each of the tasks that we do as a group. So that's our focus group. And I'm not sure who I go to next. Next up is Sam.
All right, just a quick adjustment. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Appreciate you having us here again tonight to update you on some of the pieces we have moving. And I think Rick kind of lined it up perfectly to jump into our next item here, which is some funding that came about last year from the Department of Forestry and Fire Management. It's being ran through the emergency management divisions from city up through county, state, and then to DFM. The purpose for this funding was specifically for emergency mitigations and how to support emergency mitigations related to post-wildfire disaster and flooding. We've been actually quite successful in moving through this process. We even had a site visit with the Director of the Department of Fire and Forestry Management. And since then, we've been approved for a combo vac truck for water services to help support that underwater system that just gets completely inundated. A mini excavator to help out with the channel work in that area. Also approved and delivered already is one CAT 950 loader to help remove debris in support of many different items, including the Killip detention basins. Two digital signboards for emergency messaging and traffic control for when we have those immediate closures, really trying to get extra support to alleviate the pressure we put on Flag PD, all of our first responders, and all of the body count that we had out there to close all of these roads to keep people from getting into those flood areas. So there was a whole mitigation piece specifically for emergency traffic mitigations. Couple of those items, like I said, have been delivered and are pictured here. So we're very excited about those. We're still waiting on a few more of those pieces to come in. However, we worked them all through procurement. All have been approved for full reimbursement. So very excited about that piece. Great team effort. Stacy Brekler-Nags has been huge in helping us get all this pulled together and working with all the emergency management departments. So we're pretty excited about the movement on these to really help all of, all of our resources in the region deal with this. From there, I think we'll jump over to Ed with FEMA grants. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. He's cheating. He has a slide deck there to actually read off of. I just guess when I have to come up here. Ed Schenk, Stormwater Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. So just to keep you informed on where we are with some of these federal grants for the Spruce Wash flooding. We've had two grants already out, proposals I should say, already out to FEMA. These are for the BRIC grants. These were submitted earlier this year. So that's the building resilient infrastructure in communities. One for Linda Vista, Culver up sizing roughly a million federal dollars if funded. And one for South Eldon flood mitigations, roughly, if I remember correctly, about $2 million of federal funds. Just this week, we've submitted two more grants for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP. These are under review at the state, so the State Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, before being submitted by the state to FEMA. One is for about a million of federal funding at Cedar Avenue Culver for upsizing there. And the other is for $4 million of funding for Spruce Wash channel improvements between Cedar and Arroyo Seco, based on the feasibility study that we just received. So just a quick update on those. And unlike Sam, I don't know who's next. So I'm just going to hit the next button. Bam, there we go. Cedar, Dorthea, that'd be Christine, I believe. Thank you.
Real quick, with the BRIC grants on the prior slide, when are we expecting to hear back? I know they just got submitted, but what's, what's the timeline look like?
That's always a great question. It's sort of at the whim of FEMA and their workload. But sometimes we hear back fairly quickly. During COVID, it was much slower. So now that we're coming out of COVID, I'm hoping that we can hear back this year, hopefully later this spring or early this summer. And then it'll have to go through the whole grant award process. So there will be the typical process with any federalized dollars, which would be the NEPA compliance and everything that goes through federal compliance. So it does take, unfortunately with FEMA funds, it does take a little while before we get that funding awarded to us. It is all reimbursable. So that means we spend the money upfront and then we're reimbursed after. Luckily, we have a great team with Stacy Brekler-Nags and her group to track all that and to help with the grant provisions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This is Christine Cameron. I'm sorry, I cannot get my, I'm on my telephone or my cellphone, cannot get my camera on this afternoon. So Tiffany Construction, they have been working out in the project area since mid-March on the Cedar to Dorthea project. A council confirmed approval of the construction contract last week at our regular council meeting. So over the last four weeks, they've been working on channel grading, removal of existing improvements, and getting the franchise utility companies in and out of the area doing their relocations. The Unisource gas work is complete, and we have APS and Lumen going in next for their work. We've also relocated our domestic water main, and we're working on the reclaim water realignment this week. So we'll, we'll begin excavating for the large box inlet next week in the areas that have been cleared for the utilities. We still have a lot of work to do, and we, we will continue to, to push forward. So next slide, please, or I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Christine. Good progress on that project. I was in there today and it looks good. Killip School Regional Detention Basins is the next project to quickly discuss with you. If you've been by the school site on Sixth Avenue, you will notice that the detention basins are now completely excavated. There are two large piles of topsoil in the center of each of those basins. That's actually finished grading product that will be used on the slopes and on the actual field subgrade surface. So that material will be a combination of finished grade, and then there's some export as well. The driveways and sidewalks have now all been rebuilt into the new school site where we had done the underground piping project to Third Street. This project is, is really kind of getting closer to the finish line. We expect Core Construction and FUSD to hit their mark. They were scheduled for end of June to be completed. It's looking like we are moving towards that direction, and it's, it's going well. We continue to, to visit with them, and Adam Yally out of our Public Works Office spends a lot of time there. But really good news on Killip School, and if you've been by, the school looks great as well. They are kind of down to finished colors, cabinetry, and floor covering. So very excited for our school community to move back into a new facility come August of '22, when school resumes. The Killip inlet at Ponderosa Park, this is the inlet structure that is being designed to go into these detention basins. This work is not something you will see constructed this year. This is something that is in design. There has been some funding that has been identified for this project work. But it is the next logical piece to this project. And clearly, we need to do a lot of rework behind the head start and the Ponderosa Park itself. So that work is in coordination with our Parks Group and Amy Hagan to try to make sure that not only are we thinking about a community amenity into the future, but that stormwater conveyance, which will eventually move water from the Arroyo Seco inlet down to the Killip detention basins. And again, project will not be delivered this year, but we are in design and scoping for that project for the next year. This year, you're going to see an interim measure. And Ed, do you want to speak to this, or you want me to? So the interim measure, I'll grab it, and if I miss something, let me know. The interim measure, we will utilize concrete barrier to funnel water from that Arroyo Seco flow down into these Killip detention basins. They're kind of staged and stacked from what used to be the former mitigation measures for the existing school that was demolition. So those barriers are placed, and they're now in kind of rough alignment. And in the next couple of weeks, you'll see those kind of get firmed up, solidified, and moved into their final position as we wrap up the final grading on those detention basins. Upstream work, if our friends from the county are with us, perfect. I believe, Lucinda, you might be with us online.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. Well, we've had an exciting last week here, as everyone's aware, with the tunnel fire north of Flagstaff. And, you know, unfortunately, we did lose 30 homes. And as you're aware, we're, we're mobilizing the recovery efforts now, working with those property owners and residents. And I'll say for me personally, this is really challenging because I know many of them, having worked extensively over about six years in that area for the Schultz flooding. So it's really sad to see them impacted again. And we will be running the flood modeling that's taking place this week to determine if, if they are at risk now for additional flooding. So here we go again. And I literally just got, completed a presentation with the Board of Supervisors a few minutes ago, talking about the county launching a community wildfire defense program, utilizing both some ARPA funding as well as funding that's coming through the IIJA that's for dedicated funding for community wildfire reduction programs. So, so anyway, more on that probably at another time. But I know right now, there's a lot of interest from the public about what are we doing? We are obviously, in fire season, certainly encourage everyone to do whatever they can to reduce the fire risk on their properties and, and be fire safe. So with that, I'd like to give you an update on the district's efforts relative to museum. And I've got great news to share. The Forest Service signed the NEPA decision, a categorical exclusion decision, last Friday. And this week, Tiffany Construction is mobilizing a crews onto the forest area now, starting with some grade control. Then next week, we'll begin to work on the areas that will ultimately become alluvial fan projects to get those down to mineral soil so that we can continue to work if we go into fire restrictions on those areas. And obviously, that's really critical. One element of that to be aware of is that the very, the, the, the work that is the furthest up in the watershed, at the top of the East Tributary, that work is within a spotted alpac area. And we are still waiting to hear from the Fish and Wildlife Service as to when we could begin construction on that area. It may be as early as June or as late as September, October. So that will be dictated by that decision. But there's a great deal of other work that can be accomplished, both just above Paradise on the Fan there, between Paradise and Lockit Ranches, as well as further north of Mount Eldon Estate. So there is still other, a lot more work that we still need to accomplish on forest. So very excited about launching that. Off forest on the private properties, we are down to mineral soil on the, the two Fan areas. And they began work at Lockit Ranches, working on the Fan there as well as some other grade control and some other work that's, that's going on in that area as well as further north in the Mount Eldon Estates area. They'll be, be starting construction there and mobilize, they've mobilized in a lot of the materials. So in effect, they'll work their way north, although I believe that the 40 acres, there will be a dedicated effort there to begin the grading and placement of the log sills in that area. Importantly, tomorrow, Sam and, and I and our new emergency preparedness coordinator, Preparedness and Response Coordinator, the gentleman that's taking Sam's position, as you know, that where he held at the county, at County Public Works. We are meeting along with Tiffany Construction to, to lay out the timeline for the sandbag distribution into, into the neighborhood. So we will have more information on that here shortly. So, and being able to mobilize that effort here within the next week to two weeks or so is, is my hope. So I think that concludes the updates. So everything is currently on target and on, on, on schedule on our end. And, you know, we're excited to continue to move this, this important work forward. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda. I'm not seeing any questions this time. So, yeah, thank you. Back to Sam.
All right. Hey, thank you, Lucinda. I appreciate the update and always appreciate the partnership moving forward. So.
All right, thanks.
With that, we'll jump into the siren system. A lot of good movement on that. We actually met with the vendor today. I'm covering some of the meetings for the county emergency manager. For whatever reason, I guess he's busy right now. So I'm stepping in to help out as much as I can as we're coordinating on both sides of the house to make sure all of the pieces align here. You'll see that we have a new picture this week. Last week, they delivered all four of the new siren poles. They are sitting out at location in each site. The vendor is working to get a contractor in place who has accepted and is moving forward with the scope of work to get these placed. They're working to get a scope of work from a crane agency to help get everything aligned and make sure that we're in the, in the green as we move forward. Big piece of this here is the connection between the emergency notification system and the radios that go into these. On the backend side, the county's working diligently to make sure that their system integrates perfectly with that alert system. So as these alerts go out, they align with where our current thresholds of notifications are now. One of the other big items that they're working through on this is the community messaging piece. And you're going to hear some of that coming up from Sarah here in just a little bit. We met last week. We had to shorten that meeting because of all of the events going on to start pre-planning what that messaging is going to look like so we can have a clear, concise message to all of the residents so they understand when we're testing the siren systems and what each phase of that testing is going to sound like and what that expectation will be moving forward. So we look forward to good information coming out on that here very, very shortly. The deadline is approaching quickly for the Endemave to have these finalized, installed, and being tested. So one of the big items we're, we're working on.
Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick heads up, Sam. I'd, I'd love to be, and I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but please extend the invitation to the entire council if you're able. I would love to be present at one of those early tests, just to see how it's going and experience it for myself.
Oh, that's great feedback. And frankly, we're looking to pull together about eight to nine teams to help us throughout the community, to stage strategically and understand what we're truly going to get out of these siren systems. So it's not just a test and make sure they come on. We want boots on the ground to understand where we're hearing, what we're hearing. And then we're going to make those tweaks and adjustments on sound, quality, whatever acoustics that they can adjust in there while they're here and do that real time onsite, give that live feedback. So you all might be a very valuable resource out there in the field to help us hone in those sirens.
Great. And I realize it's part of the sausage making process, right? It might not be clean or perfectly smooth, but would love to experience that and be a part of it.
Well, yeah, I appreciate the, appreciate the offer up. And now that I'm hungry, we'll jump into the next section. All right, the spring sandbag refresh. Now, this is the big one. A lot of pieces moving on this over the last couple of weeks. Last week, as I've been assigned as the Operations Section Chief for the City of Flagstaff's IMT, I pulled together most of the resources we had assigned in that section, everything from traffic control down to volunteer coordination. A lot of good pieces moving on this. However, it's broke out into two phases. It's the best way to explain this this year. So it's not just one operation. Phase one, Lucinda brought it up, we're meeting tomorrow to understand how we can get the community sandbag deployment project out there. That's that self-serve service, I guess you want to call it, for residents to, who may not have a truck or may not have the ability to go pick up sandbags and get them to their house. Well, hopefully, we stage them strategically enough in the community, they can just go down the street and grab what they need. It's been successful the last few years. We're going to continue with it. That's the easy part of the project is getting those out there. We hope to have all that if all goes well and the contractor lines out well. I'm assuming what we'd like to see is by May 9th, that week in May 9th. That's probably a little far out. Hopefully, it's sooner, but I'll know more tomorrow. And again, we want to thank the county for really helping us get that piece lined out. Phase two, now that's going to be the piece where we are going out and actually doing the work for some of our community members who can't do the work for themselves. So as I just said, today, we had a meeting on our volunteer coordination internally with the city. I didn't realize how many phenomenal staff we have here who are tied to volunteer coordination. So really great efforts, really good teamwork today, and we've got some really good pieces moving forward. We hope to get a detailed slide on our next update and frankly, be operational by then to give you an update of where we are. With that said, we're already trying to figure out what those dates will be for volunteer events. We know we'll probably see most of them happen on weekends. And frankly, with not being able to get the support crews we need to do the work during the week, contracted services, much like our conservation teams, things like that, we know volunteer days work best on weekends. So we're going to start getting that in people's mindset now, pre-plan. We know we're going to spend some weekends out there and get this work done, but we hope to do some good work. I think with that, we will jump on over to, I'll continue on here, but this is going to be a bit of an effort, and I think Sarah's going to come up here as well. Again, this ties back into that volunteer coordination. We know that this is a massive piece. It always has been. It's been something I've been tied to for the last few years, even before museum. It's something I've been engaged in with our Boad groups for many years, volunteers active in disasters. And we know we're going to need to lean on some of our partners here in the region. I have reached out and we're working with Carol Dykes on some communication pieces. I wasn't able to get it coordinated for tonight, but we're hoping on the next update she can be here and give you an update on what they do. They're truly the experts in volunteer coordination. But frankly, I realized today that we have quite a few experts here in the city too. So pretty excited about that. But Sarah, do you want to jump in here and talk a little bit about some of the pieces that we have moving for volunteer coordination?
Yeah, thanks, Sam. I think the main update from Public Affairs is that, you know, we stand ready to amplify and send out any messages from our IMT team and from the Operations Section. We have a lot of partners, United Way, Sam mentioned, so we're definitely ready to send that out through multiple communications channels and try and get as many folks involved as possible. I know we have folks from the Pro's Section, Sustainability, we're working with, seeing, you know, how we can connect with NAU as well to get those resources involved. So really, it's an all hands on deck type of effort.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions on this one before we move on?
I'm not seeing any online, so we are good.
Perfect. All right, I'll move over to the one that's near and dear to my heart, but I'm going to leave it to Shannon to kick it off. It's the Emergency Operations Response. And by no means did I catch her off guard with that, so. Sorry, Shannon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Shannon Anderson, Deputy City Manager. So we have been working as a team just to prepare for the emergencies that we might encounter this summer. Obviously, for wildfire, we often have incident management teams that come in and help us with those, but when it comes to flooding, that's usually our resources here from the city and the county. So what we've been doing is talking about our incident management team, preparing individuals for the roles that they'll take. The next piece that we have is providing training so they're ready to go. And then we'll also be doing a similar process for the Emergency Operations Center to make sure that we have the center ready to go and that folks know what they're supposed to do once the emergency actually arrives. So I know that Sam's going to be able to be much more technical than I, so I'll pass it to him.
Well, I don't know if I can really follow that one there. And frankly, I think we're all a little concerned that Shannon's going to get picked up by one of our local incident management teams. She has, she's come a long way in just understanding what this takes, but truly putting an incident management team together really is a team. Separate from even the day-to-day team that they work with, it takes a cohesiveness to really get them to bond, move forward, and to complete and do what they need to do on their mission. So a lot of good pieces moving here. Frankly, we've been fortunate enough and you all are fortunate enough to have some people who have a high skill set and a high level of understanding on what it takes to work in an incident management team, a lot of them in your first responders, and they're going to be truly coaches for this team moving into the season. And we look forward to bringing them together and doing good work, pre-planning, using this 2022 refresh as kind of the kickoff to get the team moving in case we do have an event. The whole goal behind pre-planning for disaster is unfortunately, hoping it never happens, but knowing that if it does, we're covered. And so huge thanks to Shannon for leading the effort on that. We're truly excited to see this come together. A lot of great people come together for some good pieces. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to the most important piece, which is communications.
Thank you, Sam, and good evening, Mayor and Council Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. I'll wrap up our presentation tonight with an overview of what we've been doing for museum flood communications during the past month. So at the beginning of the month, I think April 1st, actually, we released an e-newsletter which linked the Spruce Wash Technical Feasibility Study. That included kind of a brief overview of the key findings of the study and then also linked the full report and the multiple exhibits as well on our website for those residents who would like to take a deeper dive into that. Right now, we have a couple of different things in the works for communications. We are focusing on developing several different products related to our sandbag refresh efforts, which Sam just mentioned. That will likely include joint press release with the county, again, an e-newsletter, social media campaign, and then also working with our partners in the neighborhoods. So for example, the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association to make sure that we're reaching all of our residents. Those communications pieces will also be in Spanish and English whenever possible. We're also working with the Flood Control District on a variety of communications for the sirens or alert systems that will be installed shortly. As Sam mentioned, some of the things we're working on include a video. There will be a write-up in the flood guide that the Flood Control District sends out to all of our residents in the area. We're also thinking of some sort of reference piece that residents can have kind of very visible in their homes, maybe like a fridge magnet or something like that, that just reminds people what to do when you hear that siren. And then lastly, hopefully, getting on some of our local talk radio programs just to get the word out about this new siren system that's going into the neighborhoods. So that's all currently in the works. I also wanted to take a moment just to highlight our partner, Beta PR, and take a look at what we've accomplished so far with their help in terms of communications. So since we signed our contract in January of this year with them, they have helped us to create a website which has over 1,600 page visits. And that website has been really helpful to have really a repository of information that we can keep updated as things change very rapidly. We've sent out a mailed flyer to almost 1,000 addresses in the area and also hand-delivered flyers when necessary for specific projects. We've sent out so far four different e-newsletters to about 500 different email addresses each time. And then Beta has also been working a lot behind the scenes, doing things like keeping our stakeholder database updated, keeping our website updated, and just being in general very involved. So just wanted to thank them for all their hard work and looking forward to continue to working with them throughout this monsoon season. So that is all I have from communications. Happy to take any questions or turn it back to you, Mayor, for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. We do have one public participant online that I would like to take now.
Mayor and Council, I have Don Rodriguez. Don Rodriguez, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and address Council.
Hello, Council. Good to see you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me here today. Our deepest thanks to this Council for all your endurance on this subject. Really, it's appreciated. The tunnel fire feels familiar, doesn't it? It feels like a horror movie sequel. The next disaster in a long line of disasters that are coming has arrived. Everyone knows that resources are limited. So much work and effort has been extended to understand these disasters, devise plans, and implement them. I'm sure we could all tell by the presentations tonight how much, how much everybody's been working hard in the improvement. We have pillars in the community doing the best they can, like all of you and everyone here today. Keep learning and moving forward with transparency and communication. But please, 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 don't let all this hard work go to waste. Let's keep moving forward. Now is a good time to take a breather. In Navajo, this is called sehaseh. It is a time to look back and reflect on the work that has been done. There are four steps to life, and if any are skipped, your projects will not reach their full potential. While these feelings are fresh in minds, like a scab that has been ripped off, take the time to document, 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 document what has been successful, what hasn't worked at all, and ideas on what can be done better and what should be tried. Start an instruction manual because team leaders that have been here for over a decade won't be around forever, and we don't want to have to start over. That's the main point is when we lose team leaders, for whatever reason, we don't want to have to start over. We've come so far. We cannot improve without conflict and discussion. So this information needs to be being public. Also, people seem to ask the same questions over and over, myself probably included. So this public information would be helpful to be made available to people so that we can be patient and process information at our own pace, like the information here today. I'm going to have to go back and look at it. We know your hearts are in the right place, but it took a long time to get to this conversation, but the relationships that have been so hard to establish. Don't give up, stay strong, and take care of yourselves. The community is only successful when you are. So no matter what, don't feel like you're alone in your endeavors, please. That was my prepared statement, but I did have two points from the discussions here today. I didn't want to overwhelm you guys with a lot of technical stuff today, but just from listening to the presentations today, Sam, I believe, he was talking about having me...
Oh, hey, Don, you're, please let us know what your two main points are.
And leaving them in the neighborhood. Okay. And it was just, I know that that was done in the past and we're grateful for it, but not to criticize or anything, but just to let you know that for every reason, I saw the bags and I didn't take them because I felt like I was stealing them. And I'm sure other people, actually, I did hear other people felt the same way. So maybe put a sign out there just saying, like, take what you need, because if they were meant for somebody else, I didn't, I didn't want to take them. So that was just one thing. And I think I'll let the other thing pass. I'll go into more detail next time. Thank you for your attention, everyone. Thank you. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, and appreciate you bringing that point up. So I've seen city staff taking note, but I will just mention that you're mentioning the pillars of the community, and I will say you are one of them that is helping us through these times. And I really appreciate your advocacy, your community leadership that you have continuously shown to this. So you yourself as well, please take a moment to reflect as well and, you know, take a breather while we have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, to my understanding, that was the, just the one public participant? Okay, thank you. And with that, I want to turn this back to Council here for any questions or discussions. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'll start things off by just showing a big amount of gratitude. Watching the process and everyone involved making this all happen has been incredible, and I am very proud to be part of Team Flagstaff and the county working hard on their end. It's been such a, such an incredible thing to watch, and I just thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll be sure to pass that on to frankly, hundreds of people that are part of the organization that you don't see every month. They're really the ones that do much more difficult work than we even do, coordinating and organizing. So appreciate the kind words and same to our outside consultants. They've done a tremendous job prioritizing the work we've asked of them and prioritizing the work to get us to a place that's not typical in a timeline. So thank you for the comments. We appreciate it.
And if you can make sure that that does get passed on to everyone involved, thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, and that message is not just from Ms. Sweet, that's from the whole Council.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'm not seeing anything from Councilmember Shimoney online, so just really appreciate the update and we continuously see, I really appreciate having these monthly meetings. We get to see all of the progress. It's shown to the public what is going on, and I'm very appreciative that we're doing this and all the, all the work, so.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Yep.
Mayor, can I add a comment?
Of course.
I'd like to extend appreciation specifically to the efforts on the Dorothea Channel and Killip. You know, these projects were front-loaded considerably, both time-wise, money-wise, resource-wise, and it was a big ask to see these things happen before the monsoon season. I know we're not done yet, but tremendous progress has been made, so I want to extend my great appreciation for the very hard work. And frankly, it was an all-hands-on-deck call on that one, and I think staff has really answered on that. So yeah, big props.
Thank you, City Manager. And with that, we are ready to move on to agenda item number 10, which is the Discussion and Potential Bond Projects for the November 2022 election. I'll have to say, I really like the new logo for Discover Flagstaff on there. Great work with the, with that.
So good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Shannon Anderson, Senior Deputy City Manager. I've put up on the screen, and here I'll make it a little bit larger so you can see it better. There we go. You don't have to wear your glasses for this one. So we have four potential measure categories that we've been working on. And so you'll see the categories on the left side of the spreadsheet, public safety infrastructure as an example. And then the projects themselves are listed individually here on the right. So I'm going to just review these quickly so that we can open it up for Council discussion and direction. Public safety infrastructure, most of this is apparatus, so vehicles that are needed both for fire suppression in town as well as those that might be wildfire in nature. There's also communication, both the radios and the towers. You'll see those bolded and crossed out. We wanted to call that to your attention. As a result of our budget retreat this last Thursday and Friday, that 2.6 million one-time dollars will go towards this expense, so no longer is on the bond list. Same thing you'll see here with the ladder fire engine. Some also reference it as a quint. That has also been funded. We took the monies that were set aside for... We took the monies that were set aside for the minimum wage state assessment, and that's what was utilized to purchase this particular engine. So what you'll see here, lastly, is the storage base for fire units. Some might wonder why this is important. That again is because these units have water, and given our seasons that we have here, it's important to keep those inside, as well as preserving the unit itself. So moving on to stormwater wastewater infrastructure, the first is the spruce wash mitigation. So you've been hearing a lot about that each month as the team comes before you and talks about what we're doing for flood mitigation. That's the first project here. The remaining projects are actually updates to both the Wildcat Hill as well as Rio de Flag plants. It includes equipment to increase capacity, make sure we're maintaining our compliance. It's got some energy-efficient projects. The receiving station infrastructure would allow to prevent damage in both of the systems as things are coming through. And then the last, new electrical distribution system and other equipment upgrades. Moving on to our energy-efficient buildings and transportation, we've also referenced this as climate action and also carbon neutrality. So those are some of the acronyms that you might associate with these items. We've got the safe and accessible bike and pedestrian infrastructure, incentivizing owners who have highly, who build small, highly efficient homes on their property and provide affordable rents. We've got home energy efficiency rebates as well as low-cost loans for energy efficiency upgrades, solar and battery pack-up, backup for power microgrids. This is for emergency response facilities and also creating community-based hubs to serve as clean air refugees during emergencies. We've got some large-scale renewable energy and/or the purchase of clean energy offsets to conduct energy-efficient upgrades in our city facilities, full home retrofits to increase energy efficiency, lower costs, and increase air safety, to create a workforce that will help with weatherization and energy efficiency, rebates for highly efficient clean wood stoves, highly efficient particulate air filtration system, HEPA, filters, to help those who might be vulnerable to the smoke that we experience here in our community at times. And then the last two is a bike share and an electric car share programs. So moving on to our last category, which is housing, these are built into three different areas, emergency housing, rental, and ownership. So the first is to redevelop city-owned housing for affordable rent opportunities, self-sustaining loans to partner with private developers to repurpose buildings for affordable rental opportunities, partnering with local service providers to support and expand existing housing assistance programs and create new programs. This is for emergency housing purposes. Use self-sustaining loan fund to incentivize the private sector to incorporate affordable rental housing into their new developments. Expand our homebuyer down payment assistance loan program. Expand eviction prevention and homeless diversion programs. Create affordable homeownership opportunities. And the last is to address health and safety home repair needs, and that also would be through a loan program. So that is a list of our projects. The purpose of today was to give you a little bit more information than we shared with you on Thursday. I think it's important for you to know that our Citizen Bond Committee continues to meet on a weekly basis. They have heard all the presentations on these projects. They've asked a lot of questions and learned as much as they can, and they've just started their deliberations, all in an effort to bring back their recommendations to you on June 7th. So the goal of today is just to make sure that these are the projects that we're going to move forward and also to provide you an update of what's come off the list as well.
Thank you, Shannon. Yeah, really appreciate the update. I also really like the bold and crossing out part. That's cool. So, well, Council, happy to open it up for discussion or any direction on this or any questions.
I just want to say that I'm not ready to do any add and deletes or whatever you want to call it. At this point, I want to hear what the Citizen Bond Committee has to say. But that said, I do think that the public safety and the water infrastructure categories are probably essential. And some, and we will probably go forward with a lot of these, but in my mind, those are the top priorities.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Others? Well, I will mention where I'm kind of thinking on this is that not add or drop or anything to that effect, but it's going to be how we couple these bonds measures, so that way we only do have two, hopefully two bonds or three. And there's a lot of crossover. One of my main concerns is if we're putting on the ballot, for example, a green bond next to a housing bond, next to infrastructure bond, next to public safety bond, we are going to see some pitting against one another. And the more that we can kind of associate these and couple projects, for example, the infrastructure aspect, I see things on the climate action list that could be legitimately included as infrastructure, like bike ped, like microgrids and that kind of thing. And again, we will have that discussion later and with the committee, I just want us as a council to know that when we get back these priorities, it's going to be important on how we bundle them and ensuring that this is going to be digestible and for the public to get on board with, because I don't want to put anything on there that's not going to be successful. And I will just also reiterate too, I know where there's a lot of demands here, but I also want to make sure that we are really sticking to this $70 million mark or 75 maybe, but that as we have this discourse, make sure that, you know, that's what we had discussed before, and I don't want to see $100 million worth of projects coming towards us from the bond committee. So, City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I want the discussion to continue. I just wanted to jump in and let you know, we are sticking with that message on the targeted sum. We're also looking to keep things, as you mentioned, digestible. I think that's a good way to describe it, and we have framed the discussion to eventually invite a discussion of, now that the committee is into the what, but eventually also it'll be how many, you know, is this two questions, is it three? We're mindful that there will be other things on the ballot in November. I also wanted to inform you, and this just came together today, but the next couple of Citizen Bond Committee meetings will be facilitated. This is an effort to allow the committee, now that they are in the heaviest lift of everything they've been doing, to focus and allow a facilitator to make sure there's inclusivity and keep things moving, enabling the Chair, the Vice Chair, and everybody to be engaged in the substantive discussion where the focus needs to be and not so much in the presiding over the meeting. So we'll handle that the next couple of weeks, and stay tuned on this. There's a lot to happen. So I just wanted to jump in with those comments. I didn't mean to derail the conversation. Thanks.
Appreciate that, City Manager, and I think that was a great idea to have a facilitator so everyone can be mindful on the topics at hand as opposed to, yeah, as you said. Councilmember McCarthy.
Yes, and we've had discussions about the bond capacity, you know, the numbers and how much these, each one of these might cost or we, how much we would allocate to it. I hope that we can review that when it does come back to Council, because, you know, in the abstract, these are all great ideas, but we may have to decide how we're going to prioritize, how much money we are going to ask the voters for, as the mayor just alluded to. So I'm hoping for a detailed discussion on that.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Anything else, Council? Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for acknowledging that from this point on, it's the heavy lifting on the part of the Citizen Bond Committee. And I just want to take a moment to express my immense gratitude and acknowledgement of every active member of the Citizen Bond Committee, I believe we have 19 active members, for offering their time and talent. Time is, I believe, is a valuable, valuable resource that is not renewable. So thank you for your, sharing your time and talent dedicated, dedicated to the Citizen Bond Committee. And I look forward to the meeting on June 7th, where Council would, would hear what the Citizen Bond Committee has to recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, I too would like to echo those comments of gratitude for the committee members. They're meeting weekly, it's a very dedicated group, and I hear their meetings are longer than ours. Just kidding. That was a joke, but in all seriousness, they take their work very seriously, and I think they're right on the right track. Mayor, I really like your idea about the coupling. I think that's a really good point. And to Councilmember McCarthy's point, I do agree that when we do have this come back to us, I would like to have that discussion, once we have all these pieces on the table with the different costs, what the cap is and what the council is comfortable doing. We don't have to get into that now, but when it does come back to us once again, I hope we are able to revisit that. Those are my comments for now, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. All right, anything else? We can move right along here, get the nightly recap. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Anderson. We are down to Agenda Item 10, General Public Participation. Anyone? I'm saying no. So Agenda Item 11, informational items, two from Mayor, Council, and City Manager, and future Agenda Item requests. With that, I will start with our main man online, Councilmember Shimoney, and we'll go around the table.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have very little to share at the moment, but what I will say is just thanking the budget team and leadership for the retreat. Thought we had a really great retreat last week, and just was really, really grateful for what, the outcomes and how this budget is being handled. We, you know, one thing that I've been thinking about, WEC Manager Anderson, you said, I think that the care team will be updating Council once a year, and that left me pondering what, where that came from. I had the impression we were going to have more regular updates. I think even monthly was what was mentioned to Council, but it'd be great to have that group present to Council with an update sooner than later, and I just wanted to share that during To and From. That's all that comes to mind. Good meeting today. Thank you all, and have a great rest of your evenings.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I too would like to just say what a great budget retreat we had. A big difference from the first one that we had, I think a lot of us were virtual at that one. So it was good to be in person. The team was wonderful, broke things down for us, pretty smooth. So I am going to the Viola Awards on Saturday. I hope all of you are going as well and looking forward to that, and I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you. I'll just repeat something I said at the budget retreat, that the staff, having done a lot of great work for many, many months, made it an easy task for Council. So thank you, Rick, and everyone else.
I think that was the area for applause for Rick Tatter again. Councilmember Aslan. All right, Councilmember Salas?
I want to express my gratitude to Tim Flagstaff for a successful Earth Day event last Saturday. I had the chance to visit the table of our regional plan update outreach, water services, sustainability, PROS, and even Metro Plan Greater Flagstaff was out there. And thanks to all who showed up and also, or of course, our wildfire management team led by Neil Chapman was there as well. So thank you for, to everyone who showed up to attend and also who had a community outreach table at the event, and thank you, Tim Flagstaff.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. And yes, the Earth Day was a huge success, and actually, the volunteer efforts were also a huge success throughout the week for cleanup. In fact, I tried to sign up for the Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, two days earlier, and all 50 slots were already filled, so I just showed up instead and told them, give me a jacket to get out here. So very successful, many people at a wonderful event, and I applaud our sustainability team for making that happen, as well as the Arizona Conservation Corps that helped with all the cleanups organizing. Aside from that, I just really want to thank our fire team and our police for their work with the tunnel fire and all the support that we were able to assist our community neighbors through this process. Such a scary, scary event, and my heart really goes out for all those who lost their homes, who were disaffected by all of the, all of the damage. And I know we got a lot of work to move on from here. The fire's not completely out yet, but I just really appreciate our team's response efforts. Aside from that, I think that that's all I got for tonight, and yeah, great budget session, everyone. So thank you. With that, getting my Bam Bam toy, meeting adjourned.